All right, thank you to everybody for joining us for Tuesday, April 11th, 2023's Planning Board Meeting. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, notice was hereby given that the Planning Board will meet today, April 11th at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Alternative public access to this meeting has been provided via Zoom online video conferencing. This application allows users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated windows. To join, follow the web link or call in the dial-in number listed below under the start time slash call to order. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. For more information on getting connected and using the video conference features, please visit the town's website, www.norfolk MA.us. Tonight's meeting will be performed via roll call vote, considering we have a board member who is joining us via Zoom, and we will do attendance right now. Mr. Weddleton?
Here.
Mr. Diamond?
Here.
Our associate member, Ms. Mayo?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan on Zoom?
Here.
And I am Chris Motford, the Vice Chair. Our Chair is unable to attend tonight. And we will proceed with our first appointment, which is our 7:00 PM Master Plan Steering Committee meeting, which is our second in our series. Today, we will talk about the forum prep and outreach. Turning it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Josh Fiallo with MAPC here. If I could share my screen. So, good evening again, Master Plan Committee and Planning Board. Happy to be with you again. So, what we're covering this evening is basically to give you a preview of what will be happening over the next month, month and a half. There's a few moving parts, and then we want to also have a few moments for getting some feedback from you all about some of those moving parts as well. So, let me go ahead and share the presentation we have this evening, and we'll get going on that. All right, so you should be able to see that on one of your screens?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, there you go. Good. So, our agenda for this evening, so we do have some new members who weren't with us last week, so we'll do, or last month. We'll do a few introductions, and because we are a sucker for engagement, of course, that's one of our hallmarks, we do have an icebreaker question for the introductory round. And we're always trying to glean information from people, too. That's also one of our hallmarks. Then we also want to talk about the Visioning Forum, which of course is coming up on April 25th shortly, in a few weeks later this month. We also want to talk about a townwide survey, which will be released at that forum, and we're preparing that. And then we also have the notion of follow-up workshops, and just want to make sure the committee is aware of what the idea and thinking is behind that. And then talk about how we're doing with outreach and promotion, and also encourage everyone to help with outreach and promotion as well. So, let's go ahead and start with those introductions. Here's again for everyone at home, the Master Plan Steering Committee membership. And we also do have Master Plan Ambassadors who are helping along the way as well. So, let's just maybe start in the room, and we can go around the room. And the ice-breaking question is, what group or activities are you affiliated with in Norfolk? And you don't have to give them all, but just give us one or two or three. And that will help us just continue to get a feel for your sort of life in the town, but also who, kind of, what these various groups are and the constellation of the network we have present. So, let's start with, we'll just go around with Melissa.
Sure. I'm Melissa Mayo, Associate Member on the Planning Board. Been in town for about six years, and in that time, I've volunteered for many things. Most recently, the Planning Board, Master Plans Steering Committee, and the Parent Strategy Committee at Norfolk Public Schools. And also at the Norfolk Schools, the Parent Leader Group. So, all in on planning in schools right now.
My name is Eric Diamond. I've been in town for about 15 years and part of the Norfolk Lions Club and the Tropeady Boy Scouts.
Chris Motford, Vice Chair on the Planning Board, also Norfolk Lions member. Kids have been involved in what was Lions Soccer, which is now the Norfolk Youth Soccer. I was on the board when it was Lions Soccer for about two seasons. I've coached with them as well. And then I've got kids in pretty much every single school system, because I have four of them. They do Girl Scouts and KIPSA and SC Soccer.
And I'm John Weddleton. I'm one of the cursed developers in town. I've been here for 23 years. I've been on a few different boards throughout the 20 years. And pretty much keep to myself other than that.
No word here?
Aaron Hunt. I think I'll stick to what I'm currently doing. Let's go with the Design Review Board, the Fire Station Building Committee, and the Master Plan Steering Committee. On the coach front, also a majors coach this year for Norfolk Little League.
Nice.
Kevin Kelkut, I'm on a lot of boards and committees, so we're going to leave that to this side. I am currently a member of the Select Board for my second term. It feels like two decades, but just two terms. I am also a coach for SC Norfolk and for Lions Youth Soccer, but I have to say, one of the most prestigious groups that I'm a part of is the Canterbury Lane Candlepin Bowling Team.
Nice.
Wow. Very good. All right.
Aaron, are you on that one, too?
Oh, yes.
Let's shift to our virtual members, and I'll just go down as they're arrayed on my screen, and I'll start with Gary.
Thanks, Josh. Yep, Gary Sullivan. How long have I lived in Norfolk? Eight years? Nine years, maybe? I don't remember, but Planning Board Member, Cultural Council Chair. You know, I kind of used to be in and out of Town Hall a lot, but broke my leg, so now I sit here in the sofa all day.
It is accessible, Gary.
I can't leave my house until I get cleared by the doctor.
And how about Joe is next?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a resident since 1985 in Norfolk. And now that I'm retired and my children are grown adults in a way, I participate less. We were, my wife and I were heavily involved with the schools first 15, 18 years we were here. Now, I participate in the Norfolk Writing Group that is funded by the Cultural Council, I believe, and that's basically it, aside from this Steering Committee.
Great. Thank you, Joe. And I see Jen as well.
Hi, Jen Patori. We have been in town for about three and a half years. And I have two kids. They are both in either Norfolk Youth Soccer or the SC Soccer. This is my first formal group, but I have coached for the Norfolk Youth Soccer.
Excellent. Thank you. And I see Dan, too. Maybe Dan isn't able to do that just this moment, and just should also acknowledge that we have Gloria from our office as well, who's joining us virtually, who's our community engagement. Hi, Gloria.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you all.
All right. So, thank you all for doing that, and we're trying to build a little community amongst the committee, so it's good. Thank you for humoring us with that icebreaker, but also now, there's no excuses. Now, we've heard how involved you all are. There's no excuses about reaching out to those groups that you're involved in and getting the word out about the Master Plan and April 25th. So, more on that in a moment. Let's, I'll guide you through what we have this evening in terms of content. Of course, you've met many members of our team. My co-lead Andrea Harris Long has had some traveling logistics this evening, so she's not able to join us, but she will be present along the way. And then we've got a full rapport of staff in various specialties and leads that you'll see almost in full force out at the April 25th meeting. So, let's talk about that. The Visioning Forum, in terms of its logistics, purpose, and all the sort of moving parts. It's 7:00 at the Freeman Kennedy School in the cafeteria there. This will be our first community-wide forum, so our first big meeting, really launching the Master Plan. It's focused on introducing the process, getting the community familiar with what this is all about. We'll give a presentation, which in some ways is similar to the one we gave to the committee in the first meeting. A little bit about what the process is about, the content that we're developing so far, the meetings and interviews and analysis we have underway and are doing so far. The focus really, in terms of what we're trying to get from the feedback we can have in that opportunity, is information from the community around a townwide community vision and identifying challenges to address through the Master Plan. So, we'll be doing that in a few ways. The meeting will be set up primarily for us to be getting feedback from the community. So, we'll be doing that through interactive cellphone voting and polling, and then also through small group discussion, which we'll do in breakout sessions, so that, we're hoping to have the room set up so that people can both view a large projection screen on the stage, but also have smaller groups, either in circled chairs or around a table, that sort of setup. We're focused, in terms of that diagram of the overall Master Plan content we shared with you last meeting, we're focused on the top portion of that, so the vision statement, but also beginning to articulate what are the problems we're trying to solve within each of those Master Plan topics. So, we will be approaching the conversations with the community in a pretty, I think, open and accessible manner, but also be sorting things that people are telling us into these topical areas. But we, people won't have to know anything about transportation, of course, to get involved, really trying to learn about people's experience in the town and how that might point to challenges that need to be addressed and solutions that might be pointed to through this process. So, one of the other diagrams we've shared that we've talked about through this process is really kind of a three-pronged approach. We're at the front end of that approach, where we're highlighting issues. The next segment of our work, we would be identifying solutions. And then lastly, through this process, be creating an implementation approach to those solutions.
This meeting is being recorded.
For the town. In terms of the format, more focused format, our agenda for the meeting, we will have a welcome and introduction from our team, which we give, perhaps also with the Planning Board or your town planner might give a brief remark to welcome people at that opening. And then we'll have an audience poll, just to kick us off, about who's in the room and who's participating in the process. That's something we'll track along the way, and something I want to get feedback from the committee on this evening is the questions that we're going to be asking, both in the survey and at this session, to make sure we've got them right, and they look good to you all, so that we can ask them consistently through the process and make sure that we use those to identify portions of the community which haven't been engaged through this process, so that we can later, if that's happening, do a more targeted outreach or approach to those underrepresented portions of the community, whether that be renters or seniors or people under the age 18, or whatever the case may be. Then we'll give a brief overview of the Master Plan, using some of those diagrams I just cycled through again. And then we'll have basically two segments of breakout sessions, which will be framed by us with a brief presentation, and then shift to the small group discussion, which will be facilitated by our staff. And we'll basically divide up the committee to also be with our staff, so we'll have two representatives effectively in each group, hopefully, if the numbers work out. And in that case, we'd be asking committee members to basically be note-takers in those sessions. So, we'd have a facilitator on the MAPC team, and then you could be helping us out with filling in some notes around the conversation that's occurring in the groups. The first of those two breakout discussions would be around the challenges. I think it's, in these types of conversations, it's always helpful to have a way to have residents just kind of unload anything that's bothering them, get the negativity out and get those challenges out, and that's actually very useful and helpful. That's the things we want to hear and discern from looking at challenges across a number of groups and through the community survey and everything we're gathering, patterns in the challenges that people are telling us, so that those will be the ones that we focus on. Once we get through that, there'll be a few exercises within that breakout, and we'll make sure that it's timed appropriately. We'll have a second, which will kind of reframe with the big presentation on the stage again, and that one will be focused more on the community vision, so more, turning it more towards a positive look toward what the future might be over the next 10 years, where this Master Plan wants to get us to, and use some exercises with those small group discussions to frame out how we can basically articulate a vision statement from that feedback. In each of those, we're thinking we'll also utilize the cellphone voting to do a report out. So, sometimes you see, like, the various leads of the small group discussions do a report out, and oftentimes, that gets a little laborious and kind of time-consuming. We're going to try doing something like that more on screen, so people could give us the sort of thing that resonates with them the most from the discussion they heard around their table. But tap it into the cellphone, and it will show up on the screen. And then we'll close with how to stay involved, ways that people can be engaged with this process as it continues over the next year-plus, and have another engagement survey at the end to ask about how people would prefer to be engaged in the process. So, would they like to come to a bunch more forums? Would they rather just, you know, be engaged by newsletter or surveys, small group discussions, whatever the case may be? And we'll try to cater the process more to those preferences. And then we'll outline some next steps, some of which we'll be talking about in this update here. Here is, yeah, that's the, pretty much the same thing. I think I just went through a more detailed version of this, which is the format and agenda. And then, just to be clear, in terms of committee member roles for you all, a few things. So, as the meeting is getting underway, we'll have a sort of a check-in table, getting people name tags, signed in, collecting those names and email addresses for the Master Plan Newsletter. We invite you all to be welcoming in that moment, to bring people into the room, make sure they're comfortable, see a familiar face. You can chat with people. You will be, we'll introduce the committee in our first deck of slides, and at that point, I think we'll have committee members stand, just to be, you know, recognized, so people can see you all and know that you're present, if you are present. Hopefully, you were present. And then also participate as participants, because of course, you're committee members, but you're also residents. So, please do feel free to be involved in the polling, be involved in the small group discussion. But we also ask committee members to not dominate that discussion, to let other people have the time to speak, since you have the time in these additional meetings as well. And then, as I mentioned, to help take notes during those small group discussions as well. And then, as many hands make quick work, we can all be involved in cleaning up towards the end and making sure that the materials which we'll be producing in the small groups get kind of organized on the tables, so that we can get them back to the office and analyze them appropriately. So, that's sort of the ask and the shape of that event on the 25th. Before we move on to the next topic, I just want to pause here and see if there's any clarifying questions from the committee or sort of questions about anything about that meeting.
I just want to make sure we're not going to have any technical issues with cell phones at Freeman Kennedy. I've had issues getting cell service in there in the past.
I was going to say the same exact thing. It's dead.
We did, I remember in the B1 work years ago, we used that technology, and I think it worked all right.
Okay.
We were at least getting responses that were showing up on the screen. That's not to say, like, everyone was doing fine. In that circumstance, what we do always, what we always do in these setups is have a paper copy of the same questions, and because there's always someone who doesn't want to participate using the phone. So, we'll have enough copies available in case, like, there's a real.
Yeah, I just, I don't want the technology to be a barrier for participation.
Good point.
So, Josh, one of the things that I've heard is I've tried to annoy people into going, for lack of a better term. Some people are hesitant, because they don't know what they need to come prepared to speak to, right? They have these high-level ideas, but they don't know how in-depth they have to go, if they have to have some kind of backing or categorization, as you noted. High level, can you just go over what you're expecting residents to come with?
Yeah, yeah, I think what, that's a great question. Residents should come with just kind of knowledge of their own experience in the town. And so, there's no homework required, no prerequisite training or anything like that. We are working hard now as our team, preparing the exercises in such a way that they're accessible and easy to get into and provide valuable feedback that we can then sort of unpack and build into Master Plan content. So, having gone through this process, many times, we're, you know, have the skills to do that, to get from the community the insights that we're trying to. So, I don't think there's, committee members should feel welcome to arrive as they are, no preparation required. And we're hoping that the exercises that we put together will be both engaging, maybe even a little bit fun occasionally.
No way.
And also, get people to really just tell us about their experience in the town, and that's what we mean by the challenges, what people are facing, what their concerns are as they live here, what they see in the stage in life that they're in, or what they might see in the next stage in life that's on the horizon for them, anything along those lines. And we'll be helping people to kind of glean that out of their life here in the town.
So, I'll stop telling them to be prepared to cite town bylaw when they come in?
Yes. No review of bylaws necessary, or participation in any committee or anything like that.
Thank you.
I don't, I'm not sure this question is actually for Josh, but I think one of the constant points of conversation for a lot of our committees and boards is, how are we getting the message out? And I don't know that we've come up with the right formula for that yet, but are there different avenues? Are we using flyers at the library? What, how can we help, and what is the current plan?
I think that is a great question, Aaron, and let's go ahead and set that one aside for a moment, because we are going to come back to, squarely in an agenda item in just a couple minutes. So, we'll get on that.
Out of curiosity, I mean, do we have budget for, like, donuts or some sort of refreshments to kind of?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Refreshments bring people.
Absolutely.
It doesn't have to be gourmet, I mean, coffee or donuts. That brings people.
Yes. Yeah, we do plan to have some refreshments. We'll talk to Rich and see if that wants to come out of, what budget where that should come up. Yes, that is a best practice. We'll have some treats available. I'm not sure if we put that.
Cartman in South Park had it right.
John worked up.
Coffee makes people talk.
Will there be punch and pie?
Fortunately, we didn't put that on the flyer, but as you talk to people, you can let them know that there'll be a treat of some kind and something to whet their whistle.
How else can we let them know? I mean, I started on Facebook.
Yes.
You possibly can't do a reverse 911 mentioning this, right?
Let's, not, I don't want to dampen this energy, because it's really good, but let's just hold on to that for a second, and we will hit outreach squarely in a moment. Other comments or questions? Anyone from the, our virtual committee members? All right. So, hopefully, everyone feels comfortable about the 25th and sort of what that, the shape of that event looks like. We feel comfortable. I think it'll be a great kickoff, really more public kickoff to this process, and we're excited about getting more in-depth feedback from the community is really the purpose there. There's a two-pronged approach, at least. There's probably several prongs, more than two, but the second major way to get that feedback from the community is a townwide survey, and so we're preparing that as well. That survey, we, our ambition is to have that launched with a live link at the April 25th session. So, we will not, we've, I think that's a best practice. We've learned it. Otherwise, it gets a little lost or confuses people about what they should be doing. So, we'll launch the survey at the forum, so, and then that forum, or that survey will run from the forum onward for, say, a month, month and a half, something like that, a good amount of time. We can decide on the exact end date, but it will be up for a while. The survey will figure out, we'll have a kind of follow-on promotion campaign, which will be sort of tiered and rolled out. Right now, we really just want to focus on the 25th is the message, so we don't confuse or draw attention away from that event. And then after the 25th, we'll shift towards promoting the survey itself. The survey, we're trying to design in such a way that is complementary to the discussion and feedback we receive at the forum, not necessarily completely repetitive, so that if we get a really passionate community member who joins us at the forum and then also wants to take the survey, it will just add to our understanding of their positions. It won't necessarily be this, you know, well, I just did this because I went to the forum, and now I'm doing the survey, and I don't understand why I did both. So, hopefully, they'll build upon each other and give us a fuller view into what community members are thinking. It will be the case nonetheless, that many community members will participate in the townwide survey and not the forum. Typically, what happens is the townwide survey will get optimistically multiples times many more compared to what our. many more, compared to what our attendance at the forum will be. So it will be, need to be comprehensive in terms of its scope of questions, we'll cover, again, challenges, envisioning primarily, but we'll just enter into those in a little bit different way as we do in the forum itself. The outline for the survey follows similarly sort of the outline for the agenda of the forum, so we'll have a brief welcome and introduction for people who might be learning about the master plan for the first time through the survey, so that they understand what it's about. We will ask the same standard demographic questions, which show up at the forum, and will show up in subsequent meetings in the process as well. The, into the forum, we'll build in a few of those same graphics and slides that give an overview of the master plan content and process. And then the feedback that we're gleaning will, again, focus on challenges, prioritization within those challenges, and then again, the community vision and priorities within that. Then we'll also ask a similar set of questions about how to stay involved in the process, how people would prefer to be engaged, and then give an indication about some of the next steps. Let me pa, let me stop this share actually, and do a different share, and just engage you all in the question around the standard questions I keep mentioning, to make sure that they seem right by the committee. Alright, so here, this was from the community engagement plan, by the way, which we talked about a little bit last, last committee meeting. So here are the questions, which more or less will show up in every meeting and every survey, every poll, and the intention, again, of these questions is to get a baseline feel for who is being engaged in the process, so that we can triangulate on who is not being engaged in the process, so that we can maybe try to get them, get a full, fuller representation across the town's population. So the first question is, have you previously attended any meetings about the Norfolk master That one, we may not include that one in these meetings, because no one will have, so it's, but we'll include those subsequently. The next question is, how do you identify your race or ethnicity, excuse me? And so you can see the choices there. So I'll, I'll just keep talking through these, and if anyone has a question or comment about any of the questions themselves, or also how they're phrased, and we're also looking for input on the answers, which would be standardized too. So the answers to that first question in terms of race and ethnicity is black or African American, Asian, Hispanic or Latinx, white, multiracial, other, which we would have a fill-in-the-blank option, or prefer not to answer. Most, all of these will have a prefer not to answer option, just because people sometimes would not want to.
Hey Josh, so just to go back to the question that you just nixed, while wording it as, have you previously attended any meetings about the Norfolk master plan might not be of value, I think it would be of value to ask them if they had attended any planning meetings for the town, visioning meetings for the town, anything that we've done in the past, so we can identify what new community members were capturing with this process.
Huge.
Great point, yeah.
This is why we review these things.
Keep them coming.
Good, good.
At the end, do you ask if you'd like to join the newsletter, or?
Yes, we do, so I'll keep scrolling down, but that's a great point on the first question. So we will, yeah, that's, we'll expand that for this first round, and include that in the questions.
Can we automatically nominate them for a boarder committee in town as well?
It puts them on the next ballot.
So in ethnicity, we ask about gender, what is your gender, and the options are male, female, non-binary, other with a fill-in-the-blank, or prefer not to answer. We also ask, what is your age? And that includes the answers under 18, 19 to 24, 25 to 34, 35 to 64, 65 or over, and prefer not to answer.
So on that one, the, the range differences between the buckets gets very large towards the end.
Do you want to do another? Do you like?
Yeah, I think we need one more.
So we, we can add a 65 to 74, and then a 75 and over?
Well, particularly the 35 to 64.
35 to 64.
Oh, yeah. It's a big.
Big jump.
And go higher, like I suggested also?
Yeah, I mean, you've got about nine, well, you've got three years between 19 and 20, five years between 19 and 24, then you've got nine between the next one, and then a lot more math needed on that one.
What, I mean, what's the difference between being 40 and being 60?
No difference.
Wow, you're so young to ask, ask that question, man.
I should use more words. From the point of view of the data collection, right?
I would think that I would have, as a 40-year-old self, you know, diagnosed, I would think that I might have different things that I would be concerned about, especially with regards to my children and their journey through Norfolk, whereas, I forget his name, he just spoke.
Joe.
Joe, whereas Joe, whose children have already moved on and might not be in Norfolk any longer, would have different concerns, and we're both in that same bucket.
Yeah, we, I think adding further breakdown is fine. Alright, so that's good feedback, we'll do that for age. We also have, how long have you lived in Norfolk, as a question? The, the range there, I think is a little more broken down, actually, so we have zero to five, six to 10, 11 to 15, 16 to 20, and then we do the break where it's 21-plus at that point. And then we also have an option for, I work in Norfolk, but I do not live here, or preferring not to answer. Is that alright?
Yep.
And then, we have a question about household income. And the options there are under 20,000, 20,000 to 39,9, 40,000 to 59,9, 60,000 to 74,9, 75 to 99, and 100 or more, and then prefer not to answer.
Does that scale to the regional averages?
It, I think the household median would be in the 100 or more, I believe.
So at the risk of sounding elitist, I just want to make sure that we're able to differentiate.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we can add, add more options above 100,000?
Yeah, I'd also maybe consolidate, I mean, 20 to 60 would be fine in my mind.
Most of those brackets, if you're in that range, you're not going to be able to live enough.
Unless you're in the 40B housing.
Even then, unfortunately.
Well, we'll, we'll take this as an indication to take a look at these breakdowns again and compare them to some of the data, and just tighten it up.
That makes a lot of sense.
Is there any reason why we're between 60 and 75, 15,000, whereas the, the two prior brackets, previous brackets are $20,000 brackets, and then the next two are $15,000 brackets, as opposed to just doing 20s, 20 to 40, 40 to 60, 60 to 80, 80 to 100, and so forth?
Yeah, I can't say that I can put my finger on a good justification for why it's broken down separately, but, so I think we'll try to make the segments both more uniform and more keyed into local data.
If I could just quickly jump in, Josh, this is Gloria. Just in terms of explaining where the numbers are coming from, I don't know either why they're broken down in those ranges, but we did want to make sure, part of why we want to collect this information from participants is to be able to compare to the census demographic data that we have. And so these categories are what's collected by the census. I think they do, they do get broken down in a couple of different ways, so we can look at some of those other breakdowns that might align more with the feedback that we're getting from you all tonight. But just in terms of sort of where this all is coming from, those are, those are census categories.
Thank you, Gloria, good context there. Yes, so we'll, we'll add that into the mix, so we'll look at more uniform segments, connecting it better to local data, and kind of keeping aligned with the census data which we can compare to. But I think that, that assignment is clear. The next question is, do you or any members of your household match the following descriptions? And this is a select, all that apply. Children under 18 in the household, seniors age 65 or above, persons with disability, a veteran, or preferring not to answer. Are there any other sort of unique groups we might want to identify?
Can you extrapolate the, don't live here but work in town from the other question? Or, can you, do you need to ask it again, or?
Once, if people have answered with that question, we would be able to filter selections by that answer, so.
Right, but you can pull that data over to here, too.
It would, yeah, we would be able to see, so for example, we could isolate on residents who have only identified as living in Norfolk, we could separate out those who identified as not living in Norfolk, for the, really the remainder of the questions, if, if we so chose to do that.
What would someone who has a business in Norfolk be expected to provide for these questions? Should we entertain, you know, do any members of your household or place of employment with it, like, if, you know, how do we make it more inclusive for business owners as well?
We could add a answer response in the, where am I? This question, how long have you lived in Norfolk? Where is also another bullet, perhaps, it's say, I am a business or property owner in the town?
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If we were to scroll back down? Do any of your members of your household match the following description, own property or a business in town? That would give us the ability to highlight those residents who are living in town but also own a business or property.
Maybe that.
That's what I was saying. Just ask it again.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so we'll add that to this, the further down question, so do any member of your household, and then we'll include property or business owner.
Is there any, in terms of this question, is there any interest in maybe finding out about households that may have young college kids living with them at home, or people who have family members living there, not necessarily, obviously we get the children piece, but there might be others that are, it'd be interesting to know.
Yeah.
Other, other family members living in your house?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
With intergenerational or multi-generational?
Yeah.
Just a question, since we have included in one of these, the question about someone who does not live but may own a business, why wouldn't you do a separate questionnaire for business owners or managers? Because their sensitivities and interests and desires, if you will, may be incompatible or completely different in multiple ways from people who are residents of the town.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Literally a different question.
It's a good point. We do plan, as you'll see in the follow-up workshop bullet in our meeting tonight, we do plan to try to engage small businesses directly in a conversation in this process, which I think we would get some of those insights, which you're anticipating. In this, I, I think for this purpose, it's, it is fine if property or business owners who may not be residents of the town participate in these engagement opportunities. I think having, having the ability to identify them is good, and I think we've solved that. But these are really meant to be pretty uniform questions, which we'll repeat, just to get a feel for the, the patterns of our engagement and who's being engaged. And it will be actually useful.
I think that's a, I think that's a point worth repeating, Josh, that this isn't census collection, this is data collection, so we have some background on the voices we're listening to in the master plan.
Correct. And it, and it's a, it's really a tool, we see it as an engagement tool, to help us refine future engagement for this process, for any population that's being missed, effectively, which we have done in other master plan processes. The last two questions are, where do you live in Norfolk? And we decided to use the precincts as the way to do that? We haven't heard too many strong opinions about sort of neighborhoods or other delineators of place.
So I've found from collecting signatures for various people running for different positions, most people in town have no idea what precinct they live in.
Correct, plus they changed.
And they did change.
A couple months ago, so.
But if we got a list to, you know.
Very confusing.
They know when they have to vote.
Many people don't vote.
I find out when I go to vote.
I, I find out every single time I go to vote. I'm like, wait, which precinct am I again? Here's my address.
You keep forgetting.
All the time, I have no idea.
Like, I can't remember anything.
It's probably not as important here, because you all vote one place, right?
We could do a map, would be another approach.
If you're gonna ask the question, you're gonna need to have, you're gonna need to find, you're gonna need a way to help people answer it.
Yeah.
Right.
Is that really, is, is that information from different districts relevant?
I think it would be, as we talk about the businesses in particular, where, you know, we, we talk a lot about the C1 and, you know, the B1 and all the different, and the C4, and where the people live and what they want, I think would be really helpful for us, when we have the questions from developers, you know, can I build this here? Then we would have the data to back up, the people that live near there would actually support it.
I think if we, if we get, say, six months into this process, and we find that we've only engaged people from the southwest corner of the town for some reason, then we, we need to do a better job of reaching the other.
The map would be great, though. I know, Richie, you and I had talked about this before, I don't think this map doesn't, it doesn't exist, but it would be great to create it, because we were looking for it before.
I know, because as we were trying to get members, residents from different precincts, I was like, they would come in, and then I would look, say, alright, where are they? And look in the precinct, and I'm like, I couldn't go to a map.
There's no precinct map.
There's a, there's a zoning map, but no precinct map.
No precinct map, yeah.
This can be a free-form entry for your address?
We, well, we can literally put a map of Norfolk in the survey, and have people click on the map.
Where they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
Which would give us the same idea.
Yeah, I think that's, that's much better.
Then, then you may not feel it's as anonymous or as.
Yeah, it's true.
Tie your hands around your house.
Yeah. Can we put like, you know, Dunkin' Donuts fire station? Otherwise, it's just.
I mean, we could just do a simple map that kind of cuts the town into four quadrants and says, do you live in the?
Which quadrant do you live in?
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, or 4, and show that map in the question, and then people just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that'd be fair, the town's not that large to begin with. I think that would provide us.
Okay.
Good data.
Somebody probably has a precinct map.
Can we have four precincts?
Can we put this on like our backlog of items that we need to get resolved?
Precinct map?
Yeah.
Four, we could have four quadrants in the shape of precincts?
Just saying.
We could, I had, I found a list of the streets which correlate each precinct.
Yes.
Yes, oh yeah.
That exists.
Yeah, we could put that in.
Yes.
I'm a little, I'm reluctant, I'm not sure what drawing a precinct map will entail, if it's like easy or hard, so I'm a little reluctant to put us on the hook to do that.
Is that something that you wouldn't mind taking a look at and coming back to us about?
What if the question was, what street do you live in?
I thought she had a precinct map, no?
You could then determine what precinct they're in.
Yeah, quickly look.
I'll double-check with Carol, but I thought she said we don't have a map.
We need to get one.
There are several streets which.
Cross, yeah.
But I guess, can you get it from the, like, from the state election, I mean, you got, is there, if we don't have a map digitally, you know, I mean, is there a way, maybe we can get the, a different way to get the map, to produce a map?
Can't we just print out or find a way, just go to the GIS map, and then figure out where the lines are?
I don't know.
Not without a lot of. Not without a lot of, I don't think officially by April 25th.
So I think two things. One, our option is the quadrants, and we just divide the town up by four. And then, two, Josh, you can go separately. Just find out what it would entail, let us know if there's additional costs or anything like that, then we can discuss it moving forward. We've got a little bit of time.
Yeah, we can, we'll look, we will look into it. I think that's a good idea. The master plan could provide a great service to the town by giving you all a precinct map.
If the one thing comes out of this is a precinct map, tough to.
And then the last question is, do you own or rent your home? And then the answer's our own, rent, or prefer not to answer.
So then how's a business owner answering this?
We could, we could add an option that says, reiterates, I do not live in Norfolk?
Well, the answers would filter out, right? By the time you get to that point, if you're not a resident of Norfolk, then presumably that question doesn't appear.
No, he's not changing the questions. Everybody gets the same questions.
Yeah, we weren't gonna do a, it would be filtered on the backend in terms of the output, the answers, but we wouldn't do a decision tree in the survey itself. So everyone would get these questions.
So this question, think about, now I'm reading it and looking at it, I'm like, you own a home or you rent a home? Some people rent. It may not be a home, right? So there's a, that really pertains to a single-family house, right?
Maybe we just say, do you own or rent?
It's just home, not house.
Right.
Home could be many things.
It can be, yep. True. I guess I'll look at it that way. That's a good point.
Instead of select one, do you want to say select those that apply? We have two homes.
I mean, that's, that's fine.
Are there any ques, I guess, any questions amongst these that the committee would like to not have asked?
No.
They're all good.
Are there any questions that don't appear here that the committee would like to ask?
So this just provides us demographic data.
It, we're not trying to understand, we understand clearly the demographics of the town at large through census and other measures, but what we're trying to hear, understand here is who is engaging with our process.
Can, I have a question, but I'm not sure how, can you have a write-in, or is it all multiple choice? I'll tell you the question. How did you hear about this meeting?
Zach.
Yeah, that's a great question, yeah.
How'd you hear about what, Eric?
How did you hear about this meeting?
Do we know what worked?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's probably not gonna be too many options, so you can probably list them.
Yeah.
Facebook, library, friend, promises and refreshments, select forum member.
Candlepin bowling.
Yeah, that's a good point. We do, yeah, we've asked questions like that before, so we have, we have a good list. And then also, I think we can add the other option where people can write in the blank if we missed something.
Yeah, that's good.
Great suggestion. Any, any others?
I saw it came out in the school newsletter last week.
Perfect.
You saw it in the school newsletter?
All right, so that's the, so this, a tip, the tip of the iceberg in terms of the survey. So if, we're, we're trying to manage the number of questions that people feel like it's manageable in terms of the ask of the amount of time that people would have to take the survey. But you can see, even just the uniform questions, which we're trying to get a feel for who's being involved, it'll be a survey that approaches the neighborhood of, say, 30 questions in that neighborhood. So we still try to keep it to the 10 to 15-minute involvement, so the questions aren't like multifaceted, difficult things, but the, it will be a, a survey which requires 10 minutes at least. Let me go back to the presentation.
Josh, if I remember correctly, the survey for the B1 committee was actually fairly well responded to.
Yes. I forget the exact numbers, but.
500, I agree.
So, so Southwood was, was as well, we, we, same thing.
Nice.
It was like 400, I think, or something like that in the end.
Yeah, so the survey, the survey we would expect is a, is an effective tool of engagement. And because the way we'll be promoting it, I think we'll even be able to surpass the numbers of those individual projects and really push this as a town-wide effort. Master Plan surveys, it's not unusual for master plan surveys, even in a town the size of Norfolk, to get over 1,000 responses. So that will be something that we kind of think about and try to target.
So you don't think there'd be any value in trying to incentivize people to complete them in any way, shape, or form? Enter a raffle for a parking spot for the computer retailer or something?
Yeah, I mean, we, if, if the town is interested in it, we, we would be happy to think about incentives. I know that there are, I have not been able to keep up with the legal, our legal department's framing of how we can, can or cannot do incentives. But I know that if the town is interested in it, we are happy to facilitate the town's interest in incentives. So.
My ability shifted.
We, but yeah, we can certainly talk about incentives, or if there's, other things that we've seen happen are like gift cards to a local business, because you can kind of support a local business and give a gift card, and that sometimes incentivizes people to be involved. So, but yeah, we should explore that as an idea, maybe Rich and I can talk.
If you start the survey, can you pause it or come back to it later, or?
Yes. That is a setting we usually do, is people can start it and finish it later. They can go backwards in the survey and kind of move, move about. The survey wouldn't actually be unavailable to them until we close it at whatever the appointed date of closing we decide on.
If someone doesn't complete the survey, will we still get the data up to that completion point?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right.
John is willing to host a refreshment party at the library to fill out surveys.
Absolutely, absolutely. Open bar.
There's actually a, there's, in the bathroom in the library, there's a sign that says no alcohol.
Obviously, I didn't alcohol, I'm just saying. Snacks, donuts.
Oh, okay.
Homemade cookies.
Open bar for soft drinks.
Free bacon?
I do.
Nice.
I love it.
Lot of talent.
All right, so everyone's good on survey? That's where the survey is headed. The follow-up workshops is an idea that we need to introduce to the committees, just so you're also aware of this. The basic idea, I think, as Joe pointed out with one of his questions, is to engage audiences which will probably, there's a chance they'll be less engaged in the forum at least, they may be engaged in the survey. We want to engage them directly as well and see what differences there may be from the community at large, namely, small businesses would be one of them, so we'd be targeting a focus group or discussion with small businesses. Families and households with youth and children, I think, are sometimes difficult to get out to an evening meeting because evenings are so tough in those households. And then seniors and veterans are also an audience which we're interested in hearing from, but may have more difficulty coming to a shared meeting at the schools, or there might be barriers there. So these are complementary to the visioning forum and to the townwide survey. We're trying to, we haven't gotten the dates settled down yet, but we're trying to give a variety of, they would be at the end of May or beginning of June would be the timeframe. They'll be kind of clustered together and promoted together so that they're understood to be targeted. We wouldn't want, we don't want, anyone can show up to these meetings, but we don't want someone who's really engaged to decide that they should come to all of these meetings, because I don't, I don't think it would be a good use of someone's time to do that. And we'll be trying to cater the conversation to the audience we're engaging. So really digging, rolling our sleeves up from challenges we've already seen from the visioning forum and from the initial returns on the survey, and using these occasions to dig into the challenges that have, have been identified that might relate to small businesses or families or seniors and veterans. So this will be kind of a deeper dive conversation that will also set up the meeting and cater the meeting to that. It also gives us an opportunity to vary the format in sort of hosting of the meeting. So, for example, for the families with house, the families and households with children, we would be endeavoring to host that as a Zoom-only session. So just to, you know, make it really easy for anyone to show up and have childcare kind of built into that session. The small business meeting would likely be in-town center somewhere, either the library or here at Town Hall. And then the seniors and veterans meeting, we would be looking at potentially River's Edge as the sort of place that that could be held. That would be the approach. Those are the dates and the locations that I just mentioned. Any suggestions on that?
Josh, on those three categories, I feel like there's another category, which is everybody that's not one of those three things. Is that, is the presumption that those people are engaged in the process, or that, I don't know? It seems to be like the other category, which is none of those three would be of value as well.
The hope is that they join us at the, the forum.
Yeah. But would they if they think it's targeted, right? If someone who doesn't own a small business isn't going to show up at the small business, if someone who doesn't have a child isn't going to show up at the youth and children, someone who's not a senior and veteran isn't going to show up.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but this is after the 25th. This is to identify who didn't show up and then move out to aggressively, you know, get their opinion. And so ideally, that first other group would have.
So the assumption is that group is showing up after.
Or they're filling out the survey, which is released after the 25th.
Correct. Chris has the thinking right, that the, the assumption would be that those, those other, the visioning forum on April 25th and the townwide survey would be hopefully capturing, you know, everyone from all various walks of life, including these, these three. But we're anticipating that these three would potentially be underrepresented.
But we may find that the only people that do show up are the seniors and veterans.
Very true. There's, I think, a little bit of a chance for us to, I may be wrong in this, but I, I think there's maybe a little bit of a chance for us to cater these three workshops based upon some of the early returns, in terms of what we see who's, who is involved. In the forum and in the initial returns on the survey, we could do a quick pivot if need be. If, for example, we, we see a very strong representation of seniors at the visioning forum, then we might want to think about a different group or a way to adjust that.
You don't have a contingent that is just hearing about the process when these targeted meetings happen, and maybe a period at the end for other, or any other open comments.
We would be having more than just that meeting, right, on the 25th? Would we have, they'll have subsequent meetings? So they could, we could always tell them, you know, this is the fall, the next meeting where it's not specific to a small business or families with children, and kind of more of a, you know, anybody can join type of event?
In, yeah, just to kind of step back in terms of the process, in, in the phase of identifying the key elements of the challenges and the vision components, these, these are the engagement opportunities. But they're not the only engagement opportunities in the master plan, of course. So from here, after these sessions, we would have a period over the summer, which is less formal meetings, but more showing up at pop-up events, so events that are already occurring. We might bring some information or make people aware of the master plan if it's one of the concerts on the town green or something like that, for example. So those are, those will be different types of ways that the master plan will be engaging people, but they won't necessarily be a workshop like these are workshops. Then in the fall, as we get to the fall, we'll have built upon all of this feedback and start shifting in that diagram of the content of the plan down in level of detail to the goals of the master plan. So we'll move from vision down to goals. And in the development of the goals, we will have another series of workshops, like this series of workshops, and that will be in the fall, starting, say, in the September timeframe. But, so yeah, there will be, so I guess what, short answer is yes, there's plenty of opportunity to engage. There will be, the content, as we move through development to the content of the plan, that will change a little bit in terms of how people are being engaged.
Sure, okay.
Commitment from the committee for these focus slash affinity groups, or is that more led by MSPC?
This, these are, we're anticipating less of a heavy lift in terms of the amount of people that might show up to them. We could be, might, hopefully we'll be wrong. They will be more primarily led by MAPC staff.
Okay.
We welcome, again, committee members to attend as many as you can, but I think you will have a more, more of a role at the April 25th session than you would at these sessions.
Understood, thank you.
Just as a heads up, Josh, we, Norfolk does have its own Small Business Association.
We saw that, yeah.
So, yeah, so you can get a lot of people in one, they meet every two weeks generally on a Monday night.
You know, I'd like to reiterate Chris's point on the Norfolk Community Day, which I think is June 10th.
Yes.
I think that would be one to get in the calendar for you guys. It seems like a great opportunity to have a table, engage with the community.
Yeah. Really build on the success of the Fire Department Committee's work. They did a great job there last year and at multiple other events as well.
That's great. So I think what we should do is definitely keep the community survey, the townwide survey, open to include June 10th.
Yes.
And then promote it at June 10th.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Probably give it a week after that to close it or something.
Yeah, give it, have that be kind of the final push, like, if you haven't participated, use your chance, maybe an incentive.
Spin the wheel, prizes, yeah, probably making. QR codes everywhere.
So who are we gonna get this, to start the little tent, the uniform one, so we can distribute the master plan information, give information out?
I think we get Kevin in that dunk tank again.
Yeah. I'm doing the polar plunge. Box has been checked.
All right. So follow-up workshops, that's the, the basic idea. We'll, you know, refine that a little bit and get those details confirmed. We're hoping, we're hoping to get the details confirmed so that we can also begin to promote those at the April 25th session.
Perfect.
With the, I guess with the thought in my mind now that we might want to give ourselves a little wiggle room just to react. So we'll see how, maybe promote the, the dates and sort of the concept of them, but not the specific groups that are being engaged, or do, we'll figure out some way.
Yeah.
That, that the idea of follow-up workshops can be communicated and promoted, but maybe we give ourselves a little flexibility. All right, now, what we all wanted to get to, Aaron was pushing us toward at the beginning, the outreach and promotion, talking about that, and I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and share the microphone more with Gloria on this one, since I've been doing so much talking. And Gloria can walk us through kind of what, what has been happening in terms of, there's been a lot of effort so far getting the word out and outreach and engagement, and then some encouragement to get us to, to continue and get the committee members to help out, too.
Awesome. Thanks, Josh. Yeah, I, I can jump in here with just a little bit of an update to share with the committee on our end between Josh, Andrea, and myself, and also Rich, what we all have been doing to get the word out about the master plan. And then we can maybe have more of a discussion about how to supplement that and amplify even further. But on our end, we've really been trying to hit all of the organizations that were listed in that outreach toolkit that I sent out after our last meeting. So sort of institutions like the schools, putting it up on the Norfolk Community Television page, getting it up on, I think we're, at least, last I tried, we're working on getting up on the TVs in Town Hall, at the public library, also digitally. up on the TVs in Town Hall, at the public library, also digitally online. I think you all had mentioned you'd already seen some of that. So it's on the community page, of course, the towns Facebook page as well. And then some organizations and businesses in town. So Melissa, I did reach out to the Small Business Association. We sent out some emails to Help KP, Lions Club, really all of those organizations that you helped us brainstorm in the stakeholders' process last meeting. So messages have gone out to everyone, but obviously having a little bit more of a personal touch is always helpful as opposed to seeing a, a message from someone that, whose name you don't know from, from MAPC. So I think getting all of your help and support on continuing to spread the word would be great. Oh, and before we pivot to that, I did also just want to mention, we have been working with the PR firm that the town works, the Guilfoyle, to get the word out via press release to those sort of press channels as well. So that's, again, sort of a quick overview of what we all have been doing between Rich and the MAPC team. But again, would love to sort of turn it back to you all now to hear any additional ideas on how we can further spread the word. And maybe we can do a little bit of just coordination among the committee about sort of posting some more physical flyers, reaching out to those organizations, like the ones that you, you all mentioned at the beginning of our meeting day. And then just what else we can do to support you in making sure you can get the word out about the master plan in general, but then, of course, also the public forum coming up in a couple of weeks.
So there's been a big push from the town to subscribe on the website to get updates based on whichever topics, you know, are interesting to you. How does that, can you go back to the previous slide, Josh? There was a button to, right there, I think it says, yeah, sign up for updates. So that would be separate from the town website, right? Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure in case we have questions about that, because there was a big push and I know people have been signing up to get the updates, but they should specifically go there.
But it's on the town website.
It's on the town website.
Yeah, so if you go to the board of, sorry, planning board, if you can see it here. This is actually, if you go to Planning Board, Master Plan 2035, and then click here, there it is.
Right. So that button there where it says sign up here, if you, again, my question is if you subscribe to get updates from the town website, that would be a separate website that you're subscribing to as well, to get updates, right?
That appears that way.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you go to the...
And we haven't, just FYI, we haven't gotten that many signups yet. I think it was seven or so, including some of you. So we haven't yet gotten that many, much traffic on that signup button on the project website.
So if you go to the subscribe on the town website, just real quick, so.
Down, right down below there, Betsy, subscribe to stay informed. If you click on that, it'll bring you there.
So if you scroll down.
So this is that reverse 911 thing, though? No?
No.
No, no, keep going down.
So you have to put in your email address there. And if you do, then you can choose, yep, right there.
Oh, you can choose what?
So master plan is on. So if you hit that link.
So right there?
Yeah, but hit that link. That takes you to that link. I know it's a couple links. Then you're there.
Okay.
So if you use the search on the town website and you type in master plan, it doesn't take you to anything?
I'll test it right now.
Can you, it'll, it can get you to the planning board, and then you have to look for master plan, but there's no master plan link.
But separately, if somebody did sign up on just that page with the e-notify, we wouldn't get that information to MAPC because it's in a separate database.
Right.
Right. That's managed by the town.
Right. So has the town sent notification of this yet?
The town has sent a press release and notification of the service being available to residents. And the big push has been the ability to segment what topics you want to be notified for as opposed to...
Oh, just of the service, but I mean specifically. I mean specifically about the master plan, since we have a, a call out to filter just to receive data for the master plan.
So, but if you're going to receive data for the master plan, I don't believe that's connected to MAPC's notification, right?
It's not, right.
It's completely separate, independent on new things being posted to the town website.
So that's the trigger.
Yeah, so we have possibly a separate database of interested individuals that are not going to receive data from MAPC. Is there a possibility we can share that data or are we precluded from being able to do so?
It's above my pay grade. I mean, I would think that if we just posted everything that MAPC would be pushing out for those updates to the website on that page, it would be happening anyways because it'd be getting updates from.
Well, that's the hope. That's the hope. We need to trust but verify, right? Maybe we can ask.
Okay, so we'll have to figure that out.
It might be good if there is a list that the town has of people who have clicked interested in the master plan to just get, bring those same names into our growing list.
Right.
Right.
So that we, just so everyone has it.
Yeah.
I think there's a, a database divide.
And I don't know if we're necessarily able just to hand over
Right.
whatever people have signed up for in the context of the town website.
Right, from a legal privacy perspective.
Ton and Justin would be fantastic people to speak to that.
Is that something that you can take on, Rich?
Yeah, no, definitely.
Which one is it? Yeah or no? Or definitely?
Definitely.
All right, perfect. Joe, did I see that you might have made, want to make comment?
Yeah, I'm old fashioned about this. I was going to ask the question, where can I get copies of flyers? I'm literally going to walk all the addresses south of Route 1A and mailbox stuff a flyer.
You can come to our office.
That's awesome. Yeah, so planning, land use office will print as many as you want.
Okay, great. I'll get you a count.
Door hangers.
Just so everyone in the room is aware, Betsy was so kind this evening before the meeting to print 20 copies, which are there in the corner of the table. So if you do want to grab some on your way out to post at various places.
And Betsy actually printed me some this morning too. So Gloria, I did drop one off at Silla's, the coffee shop. Haven't been able to find the manager of Duncan yet, but I'll bring some to the other businesses around here too.
Awesome. That sounds great. Thank you.
We had, we had one specific posting request too. If anyone is a frequent user of the transfer station, we heard that that was a good place to put a flyer, if there's a place to do it. Is there a place to do it?
I don't know if there is. It's a great place to stand for signatures.
Stand and handle flyers?
Well, they have that fancy sign.
Actually, we could.
You can put letters on that says we can't bring tile or concrete to the transfer station anymore. It's their ability.
What about a sandwich board?
Yes. Yes, maybe we can put up a sandwich board.
Yep.
I, I was actually going to suggest the fact that, starting, I believe, this weekend, Pond Street Fields are going to be frequented by just about everybody in this town on the weekends. Putting up a sandwich board there at Pond Street on the weekends would probably be a great way to be able to get the word out.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was going to stop there. I heard there's a message board there. I don't know if people, do people use it? Or would the sandwich board be better? Or maybe both?
At the transfer station?
Oh, no, 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 sorry, Pond Street.
Oh.
There's a message board at Pond Street?
I think it's in disrepair.
Enclosure by the playground, I think, is what they're talking about.
Okay. Well, you spend all your life there. And if, if you're not sure, then we should definitely go with sandwich board. Okay.
A couple of the other locations around town that had been mentioned, that might be good to add a physical flyer, where the Norfolk Arena, if anyone is hanging out there in the next few days. I guess the season might be ending for those ice rink events, but that was one other place I wanted to mention. And then potentially the commuter rail station, if there's a place to just put up a flyer, people might notice as they're passing by on the way in or out of town. So a couple of other places there if folks want to volunteer.
Four kicks would be one too then, right?
Four kicks, yep. Do people?
And in terms of printing out those sandwich boards, I don't know, Rich, if that's something that you can help coordinate with or we can talk about offline?
Yeah, we'll just, we have them, we'll print them in the office.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I don't see a, a current event for this, for the 25th on the town webpage. I don't know if it's too early or if it came away or...
It's there. So if you actually go to...
Where are you looking? Latest news?
No, you got to scroll. So if you scroll.
I got all the news, but.
See all news. It's, here it is right there.
Right, but it should be like sticky, like just right to the top if it's important, right?
So we will...
Can I ask them to put it at the top?
So we do this. Yeah, we, we jostle, we arm wrestle, however you want to call it. There's only three spots there.
Right.
So if you scroll down, school beat us.
Select first, come on.
Select boards there. And we have the hydrant flushing. So what I'll...
We've got enough signs for hydrant flushing.
No, no, I'm just saying. So what we'll do is we'll talk to Amanda in the select board's office. She'll take down the hydrants.
It's, it's just sequenced. If you resubmit it again, it's going to push everything back and keep it at the front. So if you just keep resubmitting it every three days, I'm sure that it'll stay in the top three.
Well, well, but there is, you know, you want...
And then they'll get sick of us.
No, no. Yeah, yeah. No, but I mean, there's air, well, above the fold time there.
There's a, or a button for this whole process of its own that's easy to find right from the top of the webpage.
On the webpage?
Yeah.
What, what was that?
Wonder if there was a tab up there that said master plan 35 that you could...
I don't think that's going to work.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, but.
Type controls over here on our web UI.
Yeah, there's only so many of those, those circles there.
It's just a template. They're using a template. So it's, that's what it is, is what you get.
Yeah, we don't have the, I wish.
That's all we get. It's only.
Yeah.
Back in my day, we could use HTML.
Whatever that means.
Did you try that search up top for?
Oh, yeah, try that real quick, just see master plan, see what pops up.
I don't know. I don't know how well the search works.
We'll test it right now.
Planning board.
No, but there's no master plan 35 page.
Yeah, third, oh, that's decisions. Jesus, you're right.
Well, yeah, the third one. Right.
Now that brings us to decisions.
Probably see master plan in the third one, 2035?
Right, but it means that we made a decision.
No, no.
No, that's just listing other.
Click on it.
Yeah, click it. It's going to tell you that, that's a related topic on that page. Related page.
Wait, no, no, no. So if you go to...
So it's on the sidebar. It's pointing to sidebar.
If you go to government, you have to go under government and then go to master plan steering committee. So it's not...
I mean, we're exhibiting the point.
Exactly.
That it's not easy to find. Yeah.
Anyway, I don't want to spend too much more time on this if we can understand that there's issues with the placement.
And this takes you to their page, not our page.
Which it should, which is fine.
Yeah, everything's feeding through their page. We're not...
We have a page too, once you finally.
But we, we point to their page.
Point to their page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so what else on outreach and promotion?
Just, I think we've basically covered it. The encouragement is to help, help get the word out, help get a buzz in the community. Hopefully you're kind of hearing murmurs about the master plan and people interested in the April 25th session. So again, that's, you know, April 25th, Freeman Kennedy School. Perfect.
Another press, the press release will be coming out for the forum this week?
Josh, did you say at the end of the survey, you do have a place right in there where they can put an email address to stay, to auto enroll in it?
Yes, the survey will have, as a part of the questions, one of the questions is asking if people want to sign up for the master plan newsletter, and then they can enter their email.
Yeah, that'll be great.
So that's, that's what's in front of us, just in terms of next steps for our committee to conclude this evening. So really, the 25th is, you know, that's a few weeks out, but there's a school vacation week in between. So this is, this is a good week to really push the word out. April 25th will be the visioning forum. Our next master plan steering committee meeting will be May 9th. So kind of, we can regroup from the forum, get, you know, do some reflection on what occurred at the forum. We may have some initial sort of data analysis from that forum available. And then we'll be preparing for, the townwide survey will be out at that moment, and we'll also be preparing for the follow-up workshops, which we described this evening. So I think the big assignment for the committee right now is just to continue to spread that word like we've talked about.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Josh. Any additional questions from the board or anyone on the call? Anyone in the audience? All right, hearing none, we are going to move forward with the remainder of the planning board meeting. So thank you to the master plan committee for joining us. Really appreciate the time today. And seeing that we are five minutes early, we will look to address additional items on our list. Do you want to start with the meeting minutes review and approve, Eric?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for 327 as printed.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the vice chair, Chris Montfort, votes aye. Ms. Mayo, your opinion?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you so much. All right, anything else, Rich, on here that we can kind of muddle through real quick?
You probably could tackle new business, the 262 Dedham Street.
Okay. So 262 Dedham Street, this is the Brookside Shooting Range. They're looking to extend, they're making a request for extension of the site plan and special permit, which was a decision that was made 2021 in January. And so they want to extend that to May 22nd, 2024. Any comments from the board on this? No? Gary, anything on your side? You all good?
I'm all good.
All right, opening for public comment for anyone in the audience or on the Zoom call. All right, saying none, I'd like a motion to approve the request for extension of site plan special permit for 262 Dedham Street, Brookside Shooting Range.
So moved.
Until May 22nd, 2024.
So moved as amended.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Vice chair, Mountfort, says aye as well. Ms. Mayo, your opinion, please?
I would want aye as well.
Thank you so much. We're so efficient. Three minutes left. Anything else, Rich?
Sure, you could tackle Wright's Farm Road if you like.
All right, Mr. Weddleton. Thank you so much. All right, Wright's Farm Road, the Preserve at Kinney Pond subdivision, looking for us to vote to recommend the street acceptance at 2023 Annual Town Meeting on May 17th, 2023. Any comments on the board from this? Any comments from the public? All right, so do I have a motion to move forward with a vote to recommend the street acceptance at the 2023 Annual Town Meeting on May 17th, 2023 for Wright's Farm Road, the Preserve at Kinney Pond subdivision?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconded it.
Thank you so much. Roll call vote. We'll be with Mr. Sullivan first.
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Montfort votes aye. Ms. Mayo, your opinion, please?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you so much. Two minutes. Love these meetings.
Perfect.
Do we have enough time?
A good jump to one of my updates.
Thank you.
Pretty brief. In terms of the housing choice, the consultant, Horace Lynn Witten, will come in on the, your May 9th meeting, and we'll have...
Um, and we'll have them make a presentation during the Master Plan Steering Committee portion of the meeting, because that'll be important for the steering committee members to be able to listen in terms of that discussion, so...
Okay.
That, that's the update.
And, uh, MAPC is aware?
And they are, yeah. We already spoken about it to have that for May 9th.
Perfect. And so that's that. Um, do you want to do the town center wastewater, or do we need more time?
Um, no, I think I can handle that one and then Southwood too. Get them out of the way, right?
Go for it.
We'll tackle the wastewater. As you know, we've, we have the town Norfolk submitted a congressional earmark to fund the package wastewater treatment plan for Norfolk Center. The Congressman Auction Clash's office has submitted that to the Appropriations Committee. It was one of 15 projects for his congressional district that was submitted. Um, it'll be in, in that federal process right now. Um, the consultants working on behalf of the town are collecting high groundwater data right now, um, through the month of April. Once they collect that data, they'll come in and make a presentation to the board in terms of better understanding how much groundwater discharge we can accomplish over at the school. Well, actually, on the park and rec property behind the school, Freeman Kennedy School. Depending upon when that report comes back, we'll either try to do it in June. If they're not lined up for that, then I would pause till we get back, I'll say after the summer, to have them come in. So there'll be a full presentation. Not necessarily rush per se, because that whole congressional process, from what I understand, like the previous year, the communities didn't find out to the end of that calendar year, so...
Okay.
So there's, there's time to piece that in.
Okay, but there is a risk that we're gonna lose what funding we do have for this portion?
No, no, there's no risk. We're, yeah, no, no funding risks.
Okay.
We're all set there. And then quickly on Southwood, similar to the housing choice, we'll have, uh, in the June meeting, a presentation from MAPC, uh, which will need to push out the word for the town's people as a whole to, uh, participate in the other meetings, to, to, you know, either attend in person or online. Uh, we originally were thinking about having that and housing choice, but those are pretty heavy topics, so we'll split. Southwood will be in June, housing choice in May.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions on those? All right, hearing none. Mr. Diamond, I'd love for you to read us into our public 8:30 meeting, please.
That's it.
Yep, okay. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 48, Norfolk zoning bylaws. Is this really what we're doing right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Uh, bylaw section 310, 6.9. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, at 8:30, Room 124, Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. For the town of Norfolk, relative to a special permit application to allow seven foot by three foot two inch temporary construction sign at 117 Main Street. Site is located in the B1 zoning district. Reference to Sessors Map 14, Block 57, Lot 24. Application and plans are available for public inspection on the town Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9 to 6, Monday through Thursday.
Awesome, thank you. I see that we have, uh, Mr. Champagne and Mr. Kirby on from Vertex. Uh, Mr. Champagne, you were the chair of the Fire Department Building Committee. Do you want to, uh,
That's correct.
Let us know what's going on?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Chair Montfort. Um, so basically, uh, the construction for the new fire station uh, will be starting shortly. Um, we are going to be putting a sign in front of the construction site, a temporary construction sign. This is not a permanent sign. It's a, measures roughly seven foot by three foot. I think the design was in the package that was submitted uh, to the planning board, but my understanding is the, the maximum size is 12 square feet without a special permit. So we're applying for a special permit. Roughly, essentially, a 12 square foot sign would not be large enough to really be seen from the road, um, for the construction duration. So we're, we're asking for a special permit for a seven foot by three foot sign, so...
And that graphic should be in your package.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't have it printed in front of us. Betsy, is that something you can pull up for us?
Yep, that's gonna be right up there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And so the location of it's going to be where, based on...
The, the location is, is gonna vary because it's a phased, uh, project. Uh, we're, we're not, uh, it's gonna be, um, just, uh, mounted on two four by four posts, but it will not be, uh, uh, concrete footings on, on the bottom of the post, so that can be moved as necessary for, um, uh, to accommodate the construction that's on the site.
Understood. So two, uh, two by four posts, and then what's the material of the sign itself?
Uh, let's see. Hold on a second. Um, it might be on that L 1.1 plan. It's a three-quarter inch MDO sign panel finished. Uh, we're actually finishing, we're only having the graphics on, on one side. At one time, we were thinking about two-sided, oh, it's, it's only gonna be graphics on one side facing the, uh, facing Main Street.
Got it. So I heard something, something sign board. What was the first portion?
A three-quarter inch MDO sign panel.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, I'm assuming it's just gonna be vinyl applique on the front?
Correct, yeah. If, if, I don't know if you can scroll down to the, the, there's four pages. The last page actually shows the graphics that was, uh, reviewed and, and approved by the, um, Fire Station Building Committee. Uh, next page.
Yeah, that's the detail for the sign, and then the next page shows the graphic.
Yep.
I think that graphic shows, um, it looks like granite post?
Yeah, it looks like the original.
That's the permanent one.
No, that's, that's the final, that's the final sign.
Yeah, that's the permanent sign.
Yeah. That, this is just the graphics for the temporary sign, showing what the final product's gonna look like.
Understood. So this is what's gonna be represented on the sign. Thank you. That makes more sense.
Correct, yes.
A little inception work over here. Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's, that looks nice. Um, all right, opening for comment from the board.
No comment.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Sullivan, anything on your side? You all good?
All good.
All right, opening for public comment. There's no one on Zoom. Uh, anyone in the audience? Any comments? All set? All right, so, uh, motion to close the public hearing for 117 Main Street Norfolk Fire Station. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, so I would need a motion to approve the request for 117 Main Street Norfolk Fire Station Project Special Permit for Temporary Construction Sign.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Well, I needed a roll call vote for the first one, so we'll do the, roll call vote for the first one, and then I'll ask for that motion again. Uh, Mr. Weddleton, for the closure of the public hearing.
Aye.
Mr. Diamond.
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Montfort votes aye. Ms. Mayo?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you, okay. So we will now do the roll call and vote for the approval. Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Diamond.
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Mr. Montfort votes aye as well. Um, I would propose, uh, if someone's so moved, to waive the fee for the special permit.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Diamond.
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Montfort votes aye. Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
All right. Good?
Good.
Good, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, moving forward, we have Seven Shire Drive, request for four-month extension of temporary occupancy. Please come on up, state your name, and we will go from there.
My name is Mike DeLuca, uh, Seven Shire Drive. So we're just looking for a four-month extension to finish landscaping and fencing and permanent pavement around the property.
All right, and, uh, we, at our last meeting, I believe, had a discussion around bond placement, right?
No, this is completely new.
This is different. This is another one. Jesus.
Brand new site.
Another Shire.
That's you. All right. Shire Drive's getting busy.
Yeah, so, um... Well, so in terms of, through discovery of 17 and 19 Shire, this property of Seven Shire had a temporary occupancy permit. Um, but they were granted a permanent CO in terms of the building, so there's a temp CO on the, uh...
Exterior.
Exterior site improvements.
Interesting.
What's left to be done?
There's no, um, terms of fence, yeah, remaining items to be...
What's left to be done? Uh, fence around the back, and then just, uh, finish landscaping, and then final pavement.
Final paving?
Yep.
Have you copied the site plan? How much paving's involved, front, back?
Um, it's about, uh, 14,000 square feet.
How many tons that is?
How many tons? Can put me on the spot like that?
That's why it's on the board.
I know the price is by tons.
It's roughly like 110, give or take.
Okay. So it'd be about 12,000 for, uh, paving.
Yep.
How long's the fence?
Uh, 700 feet.
And what's that gonna cost? You get a price on that yet?
Uh, a lot of money, yeah. It's about 50 grand. That's installed.
And the CD, you're, you're talking a $70,000 bond.
Yeah. Are you able to post a 70 grand bond?
Uh, negative.
Negative.
Can you get, well...
There's the site plan with the landscaping.
What's your timeline for being able to accomplish this?
Uh, I was requesting four months.
We can give you a tri-party agreement. You know what that is?
No.
Where we sign an agreement with the town, you and your bank?
Yep.
And they reserve 70,000 in equity until it's done, then it's released, so you're not coming up with cash.
Yep.
All you may get stuck for is to pay a point to the, uh, your bank for the total amount of the bond.
Take a surety bond?
A surety bond's gonna cost you 2%. That's gonna be a lot more money.
Yep.
If you do a tri-party agreement, you're gonna be able to, uh, just pay a point and they'll just attach... Yeah, I'm assuming you get equity in your, in your building there.
Yes.
So they'll just attach that. There'll be no money transferring, and the town's protected, if that works for you too.
So you can do a surety bond when insurance come, that's what the previous two were. That's... Can you get a surety bond?
Uh, yes, we have many bonds as it is.
Okay.
For the business, so we can attach it to that. I think that would probably be, I'd rather probably just do a surety bond.
Okay.
Because I know it, and it's something we can get.
Sounds good.
Relatively easily, so...
So we can, uh, create the temporary occupancy contingent on getting a surety bond payable to the town?
So there was no bond required before? Is there a reason why it would be required now?
Yeah, because you've got occupancy and you hadn't finished the project.
Yep.
That's why. Same as these young fellows right there.
It's, it's added incentive to ensure that it gets done in that timeframe, as opposed to coming back, asking for another extension.
Yep.
And continuing that process for as long as we allow it.
Okay.
In retrospect, you should have been just on a temp, not a permanent, so...
And if for whatever reason you decide to, you know, close up shop and move out, then we've got the money in place so that we can finish it up and do what needs to be done.
Okay. All right, so I guess my next question is, um, kind of same concept as what you're doing with me. What are we gonna do about the road? Because you're asking me to put up a bond when you guys should have got a bond for that road that is now so far gone, it's not even repairable, and it's, it's pretty much unsafe.
You understand the, the infrastructure of the road and everything there is responsible of all of the owners proportionally.
It's also responsible of the town to get a bond when they put the road in. For this, for the same purpose you're telling...
History, there was a bankruptcy in that, in that project.
I understand.
So basically, it was just left open.
Yep.
So the base, I, from what I understand, the, the agreement, your deed, makes everybody, including the town for the police station, all responsible for the, uh, improvements on that.
Okay.
So the summation on that is that we're going to be, or I will be coming back to this board to start the process to, so there's a, there's a, a bond with Walpole Corporate Bank. It's 272,000 dollars. It was underfunded. It's been underfunded, so we're gonna have to figure out a roadmap to finish this all out, so...
All right, just, just asking because the road is...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we're not... We're gonna need your cooperation and the other businesses to, to get from here to there, because, uh...
Because they're starting, you know, they put steel plates all over the manual covers, all the asphalt's falling off, the plates are bouncing off. You just got open holes in the middle of the road, so...
So I'll be back before this board to call the bond, um, coordinate Walpole Corporate Bank to bring the money over to town, and then start the process to finish the road.
Fair enough. Yeah, okay.
I got a motion on the table to, uh, uh, extend the temporary occupancy for a four-month period contingent on, uh,
21th, 70th?
$70,000 bond to the town.
You said four months. So four months is... You said four months, right?
Yeah, in August.
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 So probably do the end of August, that way we have a...
August 31st?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so all together now, uh, motion to approve for Seven Shire Drive a four-month extension of temporary occupancy until August 21st, 2023.
31st?
31st.
31st. August 31st, 2023.
So moved, amended motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Diamond.
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Aye.
Montfort votes aye. Ms. Mayo?
I'm sorry, did you say the amount of that bond?
70,000.
70,000?
$70,000 bond.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. I would want aye as well.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is 19 Shire Drive. Status update of completion. Welcome back.
Hello.
Hi. Dennis Brolin, 19 Shire?
Ted Connolly, on behalf of Dennis.
Just quickly in terms of recap, the, Mr. Brolin's before you, Attorney Connolly, uh, the, March 27th, you voted issue a temporary occupancy permit with a 50, $50,000 bond. The bond is in place. We received it. They are on a temporary CO uh, with a June 30th, 2023 completion date. So here tonight, just to talk about some updates to get to that point. I'll talk about it a little bit now, so what we're essentially doing is putting calendar reminders in our software, Outlook, so be frank about it, so we have a, a time that we can kind of remind... They have their zones, but on our end, in terms of our office, to, to look into these in terms of, see where they're at. So essentially, Mr. Brolin's gonna talk about what they can accomplish up to the beginning of June, because your next meeting in June is June 13th, goes to the 30th. There isn't on the, you know, you could always schedule a special meeting, but I think the idea is to have it queued up for your June meeting, so I'll defer the floor.
Based on the as-built plans, uh, United Consultant Rick was in today, uh, he was working on the septic, uh, as-built. Um, the level spread was done behind a dumpster. Um, uh, the flayed end, uh, to the drainage, that was riprapged, um, based on Beta's, uh, report. Paving, we had the front patch in front, um, put binder down, and we're gonna be paving in four weeks, three to four weeks. Um, at that point, we'll, um, we'll paint the lots, then we'll paint the lines and, uh, handicap accessible areas. Um... I guess the, the biggest thing was, um, the pond, how it was, uh, holding water, and we talked about being an infiltration pond, and I still kind of confused about that because it was designed through Beta or approved by Beta. And, um, the pond's draining now. It's dry right now, but during the winter, it's gonna fill up. Um, the soils there are classified as, they're, they're Class A soils. It's like, not glacial till, but it's a tilly soil. So, um, infiltration, it's not. Uh, my other concern too is this secondary pond that was built with the subdivision, the commercial division, and that's, um, has 20 inches of loam on it. That doesn't drain either. And that was prior to me. Um, so there's been a lot of, you know, engineering involved. Nothing I've seen is correct. I do this for a living, so I, I kind of know soils, and I know, uh, what they designed is not an infiltration pond. I do this for a living, so I, I kind of know soils, and I know what they designed is not an infiltration pond, and the secondary is not an infiltration pond, so I know we talked about having a DPW go there, but I'm not confident with the town DPW going there. I'd like, you know, Beta to revisit this and find out where they went wrong.
Well, Beta won't tell you who went wrong. Beta's a consulting engineer, so the design
But they approved it.
What?
They approved it.
I understand, but still, it falls back on, so my question was, because that has its own self-contained stormwater. Do these basins, are they owned by the subdivision? Are they part of the Clonan area?
I don't believe that basin that was in place is owned by, it's further down the road. It's closer to Mike's building.
And that's part of the regular stormwater for the subdivision?
Correct.
That in theory, the lots were supposed to just connect up to.
I don't know if much
That was the theory.
Yeah, the theory, but that's a higher elevation, so
Well, that's not here nor there. Why did you put in the second basin?
I don't know, because I was told to.
Who told you to?
The engineering firm, United Consultants, based on test borings, they said I needed that.
So when you had your site plan review, you were told to put in a second basin?
Correct.
And when you put in the second basin, apparently nobody did infiltration tests.
Well, when you, prior to me even getting my permit, they do borings, and based on those borings
They did borings.
Yeah, they did borings, correct.
And they did soil evaluation.
Correct.
And that made it doable to construct the basin that was going to infiltrate.
Correct.
And now it's not infiltrated.
And there's an infiltrator under my parking lot too, so we get the storm scepters that go into the infiltration.
Oh, I understand, but that basin, whatever's going into it is designed to have, whatever's going into it infiltrate properly. So obviously, that wasn't done. It's not infiltrated.
I've dug that whole site, and there's really nothing suitable for infiltration. Like I said, it's a, it's a, it's not even a gravel, it's a, it's a silty clay.
Did you talk to Rick about it like I had suggested?
I did.
He was the one who designed it.
Unfortunately, it wasn't him who designed it.
Who designed it?
Jimmy Susie. He's deceased.
Okay, the same company though. And what did Rick have to say?
Not much.
So what, so it says, what, in this term, in this topic, I think we, what I suggested is that we have a offline meeting in terms of, let's sit around the table, discuss this in terms, and then come back to the board.
Somebody went wrong, because you've got a basin designed, and it doesn't take the water. So somebody went wrong somewhere.
Well, we want to make sure it is wrong first, before we say it is wrong. I mean
Well, Beta's saying it's wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is, I know it's a health hazard, but, I mean, it's, it's like that during the winter months, and as soon as spring comes around, it's dry, even with rainstorms, thunderstorms, it's dry up until a certain point, and then it fills up again.
So that basin that you're talking about there is also the basin for, which you haven't completed, the site and the back site work, so that basin is really, you have, that basin that Beta referred to on that plan, that's for that, so that, there's loam, if you, can you zoom in a little bit?
I can.
If you don't mind, please. So you have the stockpile area there, and so if you look in the middle
Where's the basin we're talking about?
So this is not in
Hold on one second.
This is not in right now. The rain garden's not in because we have a stockpile material here.
Sorry.
This
I'm sorry.
Just wait a second.
Hold on, let me get it.
Make it fun.
This is the infiltration pond.
That's the one that's keep holding water.
Yeah, and this is, this holds water as well, but this has an outlet, this outlet to the
That's functioning fine.
But based on the storm, but based on your stormwater design for that one basin that has water in it, the site isn't in the position it's supposed to be yet, because you're still working on it.
Correct. Once we take the rain garden, you'll get some, not much infiltration, but the overflow will go into this, and then I have a raised basin that, once this overflows, it goes into this one, but my concern is, this one was already here, and like I said, we did some borings out there, and there's eighteen to twenty inches of loam.
Well, the first thing you got to do is construct everything per the plan.
Right.
We then see what's, well, you just said
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So once that's all done, then see if it infiltrates within that seventy-two-hour period. If it doesn't, then it'll take further review.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still in process, really, because it, it's not, so you could talk about the, talk about completing the back end of it, and then we get to the
Right here, there's an outcropping ledge, so that's financially killing me, to be honest with you, it's, it was a twenty-foot vein ledge that I didn't know was there. We're slowly taking that down, but what we have to do is take it down, crush it, get it off-site. So I need a suitable place to put it. Most people pay for it because it's a decent, decent gravel, so as of right now, I'm just crushing and transporting off-site. Once I create enough room and get it down to the level, then I can bring the loam over there, screen the loam, and finish up the rest of the site, wherever the loam needs to go.
Dennis, were you sure what you've done since we talked?
Well, the entrance way, it had a, when they put the binder coat down, they ran out of asphalt, and I told them not to worry about it, it was a concern in his report, so we paved in here, and like I said, in two to four weeks, we're going to pave the rest of the site. There's a, there's a level trench right there, that was just a flayed end. We put a level trench in, put the riprap around it. This riprap was taken care of as well. Rick was in today. Hopefully, he gets me some mittles on everything. We actually, you know, went into the septic, we did all the inverts on that, we shot those. I believe he went into Titan, got the invert of that as well. There was also some questions on the expansion of this wall. We had this wall we were putting in, and then we had a real tight slope right there, so what we did is, when we constructed this wall, we just carried it over.
Uh, we haven't issued a CLC on it yet, because we haven't gotten the asphalt.
How long did you get this, a site plan approved?
We started about, we got it, it was a while, it was about three years, and we finished the building last fall.
You're lucky. Our bylaws say that you can't move into a building until the stormwater is, your drainage is up and working. Number two
It, it is working.
It's not, it's, if it's holding water, it's not working. You haven't finished it, you haven't done the other side, so it's not working. You get the rain garden.
I didn't design it.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. Joe Land, you didn't, you didn't finish the rain garden, so that's going to be done. So technically
That's not part of, that's not part of the impervious, though.
That doesn't matter.
Well, it does matter.
Your lot, your lot has drainage on it, and the drainage has to be constructed before you get an occupancy. It's, it's all just a side of the fact, because you're already in, so it doesn't matter. I'm just telling you the law.
Correct, but all the impervious, where we actually function and work, is completed. Everything's completed.
Look at what I just said.
I, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
Okay, so you're like mincing stuff.
I'm not mincing anything.
Yes, you are, you're saying.
So if we, well, let's get
The drainage should be functioning and built in full before something is occupied.
We discussed at the last meeting was the drainage, the DPW may have something to do with drainage, because the drainage has something to do with the whole
We did, and we asked to have the engineer come and see, let us know what's going on. But apparently, if the rain garden part isn't done, we don't know how much water is going to be retained, because it's not complete.
Right, which is, which is why, I guess, maybe we just went on a sidetrack, but what we're here today is to just give you an update that Dennis is working diligently to get this done, and there'll be steps along the way. And the engineer just got back from vacation today, I believe. But he's going to keep working and get the paving done, and we want to come back in June and continue to update you.
Which is great.
Appreciate that refocus. Thank you. And that's, because there's a lot of work, a lot more work that was discovered as, as we've gone along. Understood. So what, did we vote for the temporary?
You already did, yep. So that was done last year. Till June thirtieth.
Till the bond's in place.
Bonds in place.
They were going to come back in June if it wasn't done, and we were going to extend the, the temporary until it was done, and get an update on the completion of the work.
The only thing I, I see holding me up is that ledge. It's a big outcropping ledge, it's really hard, it's, we can't blast it, the water tower's right there, so we're just hammering it, and it takes forever. So I'm hoping to start screening loam, getting that off-site, and whatever we need onsite, we'll do the slopes and the hills, and the landscaping's done around the building, there's not a lot of grass, it's mostly
Was there a water tank?
There's a, yeah, there's a water tank.
Yeah, the water tower.
How far away from your land?
I, it's pretty close. I mean, it's within, you know, two thousand feet.
How much?
Two thousand feet.
Why can't you blast?
Well, I mean, it's for our special permit, it's, you know
No, it's, I mean, I've done it for a lot of years in this town. It's only a permit from the fire department. And as a matter of fact, if you called, you know, the Loops Construction Company?
Yeah, Gilley Loops, yeah.
All right, if you call him, what he did with some people, including the town, including me, is he'll come in there and pay for half of the blasting, ho-ran it up, and take it away. So you might want to call him, you may find yourself saving a whole bunch of money. But if you're ramming that
We already
Ron knows what you're paying, and
Yeah, we already
How long it'll take.
Well, during the off-season, I have employees I keep on, so that's what we do. During the off-season, I keep them busy, so I don't have to lay them off, so
Blasting really isn't that, isn't that involved. It's a simple permit from the fire department, and that's it.
I guess the expense I kind of tripped over.
Why don't you, why don't you call Loops and see if you had arrangement? If it's near highway, normally, he likes that, because they'll sell that back to you for twenty-five dollars for a ton or so.
Well, it's not good gravel, it's a lot of rock. It's a lot of rock.
So why don't you look at that?
Okay, I appreciate that.
I said that with you, yeah.
Thank you.
And does the ledge have to be gone before the rain garden can be completed, Dennis?
Well, we're hoping to move this pile over here so we can construct this, because there's just so much loam. But I mean, we can, the loam can be moved off-site. We can screen it and move it off-site quick. It's just the hammering down the ledge.
Well, you know, the planning board's going to work and get the stuff. That's not the issue at all. Everything's in place, you just got to, you know, move forward and do it as best you can. Those are bad, tough sites up there.
They are tough.
That's why the guy ended up leaving. They didn't go
Yeah, and we have a building across 1A, and rent them.
Yep.
All sand, not, not a rock to be found. And it's a quarter mile away.
Different world.
It, it's sand, so I could have used rock on that project. I could have used sand on this one.
Awesome. Appreciate the update. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right, nothing for us to vote on, right?
No, no, just more update.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will see you at the June meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Rich, please reiterate our master plan visioning forum.
For those listening at home and Zooming online, or not Zooming, yeah, I guess so, whatever. YouTubeing online, yeah. April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, Feum McKennedy School, seven PM. Please join us to discuss the master plan for Norfolk twenty-twenty, no, sorry, forget, retract that, twenty-thirty-five, sorry.
And enjoy some refreshments.
Enjoy some refreshments.
All right, any additional updates?
No, I think that's it for this evening.
All right, quick roundtable, all good? All good?
All good.
I would entertain with happiness a motion to adjourn.
Actually, just one minute. Well, this is your last meeting, Mr. Weddleton.
Oh, my God.
Oh, your last one.
And so I just want to thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, because this is his last meeting.
I did not realize that.
Oh, my gosh.
It's only been twenty years on different boards, ten here, so it's my time to sit back and let the young folks take care of the town.
Well, we
Which is what's happening.
You can watch us at home. I mean, we have extra chairs. I feel like we should have an honorary John Weddleton chair, right?
We will miss the expertise that you brought and the experience as well, and just all the little relationships like you just showed there.
Yeah, the, the construction stuff is a, is a little different part of it, but you've got consulting engineers for all that stuff. You guys are picking up the knowledge pretty quickly.
Appreciate that.
As quick as I've seen folks come onto the new boards, because you have an interest in it. I see a passion here too, which is good.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Wishing you all the best. If you need anything, you know where we are on Tuesdays.
Yes, yes, who knows? I may be coming before you sometime with a project, you never know.
I hope so.
Stranger things have happened.
Awesome.
All right, now, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you reminded us. Yeah, thank you, John.
You're welcome. All right, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Montfort votes aye. Ms. Mayo?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Right, good night.